You see, you okay? I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, September 27, 2022. Board members may attend and participate by electronic means in regular or special meetings of the Board in accordance with policy BEAA and state law. Laura, would you please call the roll? Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Ziss.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. Moved by Kitty. Seconded by Beth. Laura, could you call the roll, please? Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Ziss.
Yes.
Motion passes. As always, we'll begin the evening with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, Board President Gebhardt, members of the Board, and all of our visitors today. Thank you so much for being here. I have about five things to update the Board and public on. The first is incredibly exciting, and so, and Board members, you know this, but would want to share with our public that BVSD and BVCEA, which is our employment association for our classified staff, came to an agreement last week, and their membership is in the process of voting on ratification today. I want to commend our team, BVCEA leadership, for continuing to talk through those issues. We were able to avoid a protracted mediation process, which would have been costly on both sides, and so, just really want to thank our team, leaders from BVCEA. Board members, assuming the agreement's ratified, the agreement will be brought to you for approval at our next meeting on October 11th. So, just great work by our team and the leadership BVCEA. We're really excited about the contract that we've developed, where all parties, that all parties are able to support at this time confirms just the immense value that we have for our UNICEP employees here in BVSD. And again, I think that through a collaborative effort and authentic discussion is how we got this done, so just very, very happy for that. Board members, as you know, we've resumed our teacher and school personnel roundtables over the course of the past several weeks. I've been able to visit four of our middle schools, Angivine, Lewisville, Platt. I've got two coming up this week, Southern Hills and Manhattan. We visited many of our K8s and elementary schools last year. Again, this is just an effort for us to make sure that we're listening to what's happening in our schools, so we can ensure that the ideas, the strategies, the resources that we're deploying are creating the very best conditions for teachers and schools to be successful, so students can learn. And so, those are going really well. Also want to commend Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Rob Price, for he's been doing roundtables with our transportation employees amidst the negotiations, and so, lots of tough conversations there, but those aren't conversations that we shy away from. We have those. We listen, and we'll continue to do that. Love to congratulate Superior Elementary School that on, because on Friday, September 19th, they were named a National Blue Ribbon School, which is a really big deal, one of four schools in Colorado to earn that award. It's a top award that a public school can earn for academic achievement, and our superior students and staff were able to, as you can see here on the picture, dressed up in blue to celebrate. I think that was last Friday. And so, we're just really proud of the Superior Elementary School team, given all that that school and community went through last year, to still come out and be nationally recognized, I think is just an incredible accomplishment. So, last Wednesday was Colorado Proud Day, and this is really cool. Every year, BVSD celebrates Colorado Proud School Meal Day by highlighting the commitment our district has to sourcing food from our local farmers, ranchers, and producers, for all they do to make sure that we have outstanding school meals each and every day for our kids. And so, this is a picture of Niwot farmer, Jules Van Thoon, who's on the far right, and his daughter, Jill Blue, and on Wednesday, they had lunch with students in Columbine, which was featured pinto beans that they grew this season. And thanks to Daily Camera photographer Cliff Grassmick, who was able to take this great shot. And then finally, Board members, we were able to host a job fair last week. Our team's working extremely hard to address the staffing challenges in our district. We feel like our final resolution with BVCEA will help, as we were able to move forward with increasing wages. At our hiring event, we interviewed bus drivers, teacher aid positions, substitute teachers, food service, and childcare workers, and custodial positions. Also, to update the Board and the public, we've increased our substitute teacher pay across the board, after hearing lots of feedback from substitutes, teachers advocating on behalf of substitutes, parents advocating on behalf of substitutes, and we were able to get ourselves in a place where we feel really comfortable with the wages that we're able to offer. And then, we're also hiring, offering hiring bonuses for a number of the positions, our hard-to-fill positions. Their staffing does remain tight in BVSD and our community, and we're continuing to recruit anyone interested in joining our district, or if you know somebody, someone in your neighborhood, someone who's interested in helping out, jobs.bvsd.org. We'd invite you to come and join the incredible BVSD team. So, Board members, it's now on for this meeting's Student Moment. This evening, at the suggestion of, and I think he's here, St. Tarrant's Principal, Dan Ryan. Dan, are you here? Yep, in the back row. We've invited the student members of the Title IX Advisory Council to join us for our Student Moment. So, this evening, we've got three of the student members, along with Title IX Coordinator Elizabeth Francis, and Health and Wellness Coordinator Jordan Goto here. Come on up, everybody. As Board members, as you may recall, the Title IX Advisory Council was developed as a way to incorporate student voice into our work of preventing sexual harassment and violence. They've done far more than that. They've been leading the efforts at the school level, meeting with school administrators, developing educational opportunities, and creating Title IX committees at their schools. I am so proud of the work that this council has done. It has made us better. They have influenced practices, training, and so, we're really excited to be able to acknowledge them and thank them this evening.
It's an absolute honor to introduce the Title IX Student Council. This is an incredible group of students. The purpose of the council is to elevate student voices, so I won't monopolize their time. I just want to highlight the work that they've done and the empowerment that they've had, and just honor their experience and let them speak for themselves. So, thank you so much for the honor.
Hello, and good evening, everybody. I am Sydney Wu. I am a member of the 2023 graduating class at Fairview High School, and on behalf of myself and all of the other students, I would like to thank you for taking the time to listen to us about the work that we do. It was around this time last year that we all first got together on Zoom to start our initial meetings and start to solidify exactly what we wanted this council to look like and what we wanted to do. And this past spring, we were able to make our first big push with our educational series about Title IX, Title IX in Athletics, how Title IX applies to sexual assault, assault, how your governing body, normally your school, is obligated to protect victims of sexual assault and sexual violence, as well as Title IX in Athletics and how to be an ally. For me personally, the council has been a fantastic opportunity to learn more about Title IX, and this spring, we celebrated the 50th anniversary of Title IX, which is absolutely fantastic. And I think the goal of the Title IX Advisory Council is to acknowledge that Title IX has been around for a very long time, and the world has changed a lot. And so, we hope that as younger people and students, that we can see the issues that plague us and come up to us in our lives, and that we can use the knowledge that we have been able to gain, working with Elizabeth, to make our community a better place and work forward for a better future for the Boulder Valley School District. Thank you.
Sydney, that was very well said. Hi, I'm Bella. Thank you again for your time here today. I am a junior this year at Fairview High School and also a returning Title IX Council member. And adding on to what Sydney was saying, the Title IX Council is really significant because Jordan and Liz created a safe space to really allow student voice to be heard, to be able to discuss our opinions, and in this community we have, we were able to do the educational series. And the work is so important because we really focus on promoting more educational awareness of Title IX. This way, students around us can, you know, learn more what Title IX is and use that information to further advocate for themselves and others. And yeah, through that, I was able to meet a lot of new people, and with the same, you know, common goal and interest, to work together and make positive change in the community. So, thank you all. As a returning member of the Title IX Council and a graduate for the 2023 school year, I think it's very easy to say that this is possibly the most rewarding work that I've ever done. And this council, it's just so crazy how much you can accomplish with so many people coming together who are passionate about a project. And I'm only 17, and I feel like I've done something that is going to last for years to come, and I'm really proud of the council and what we've all done together.
Hi, my name is Ava, and I am a senior at Fairview High School. I just wanted to say that I think the work we are doing now especially is very important because I found that high school is a point in time where everything that happens and all your experiences start to shape your identity. And so, I think promoting a safe place for everyone to learn and be a community is super important, and I think that our prevention with sexual assault and gender discrimination that we have been doing in the class is super, super, super important, and I find that being part of a community of people who care, to help promote things that will help future generations and people have better experiences in school and in life and with their friends, is just super, like, I said, rewarding work, and so, just thank you all.
And I would like to also acknowledge, we have two current council members who are also in the audience, who also should be honored as well. And we have, there's a total of about 18 students. This is the group that was able to come here, and again, thank you so much. We really greatly appreciate it.
Sub-Board members, any questions for Dr. Anderson? Kitty?
Well, I don't have a question, but I just have a comment, that it's so great to see the Title IX Council here, and this is the 50th year for Title IX, and it took us that long to get a Title IX Council. So, good job.
Anyone else for Dr. Anderson, or? I just have one question. First, I want to say thank you so much for coming. I agree with you that high school is kind of the time when you can start forming your identity, and the fact that we can help you along that journey in a positive way is kind of what we're all here for. So, thank you for stepping out and helping guide us with this work. It's really important work, so really appreciate that. On the sub-issue, Dr. Anderson, are we able to get highly qualified subs in, like, some of the harder-to-staff content areas? How is that working? Are we feeling like we're getting that accomplished, or do we have a plan for that? What does that look like?
So, within the new compensation structure, substitute base, so on top of the base pay of $115, we've supplemented that to create a pay scale of $160 currently for subs, and then $180 a day for retired BVSD teachers. And then, for long-term subs, that pay has gone up to $175 a day. So, a little early to tell whether, how that's impacting the vacancies we had. I think we'd be able to tell in a couple of weeks. I'm pretty sure all the leading indicators that I'm getting and hearing from the field is that folks are incredibly thankful, and that this is really helping alleviate the issue that we were seeing in the beginning of the year.
Yeah, that was my next question, is are we, is it too soon to see an impact, or can we get a follow-up report in a couple of weeks about whether this is actually having the desired outcome that we were looking for, and if not, what we need to do to continue to adjust as we go along?
Yeah, no, we will absolutely bring that back to you all. I can bring it in superintendent's comments, and I'd give it a month.
I saw a meme, not that I talk about memes from the table very often, but it was a teacher saying, it's the only profession she knows of, that when you take a day off, you actually have to work harder than anybody else, because you have to prepare subplans, and you have to, it's not like you just get to take a day off, and I don't think the public appreciates how hard it is for both subs and for teachers these days. So, anyway, thank you for stepping up and trying to help us solve that problem, because I think it takes some of the stress off everybody. All right, we're now moving on to public participation. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting their request to speak during public participation forum that can be found on the BVSD website, or by contacting the Board Secretary, Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meet. The Board respects the right of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticisms of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and then involving the Board as necessary. If you choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the Board does not endorse the comments of any speaker, and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event the affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask a person to address the Board, one, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the Board. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. This video will be recorded for public viewing into perpetuity. BVSD reserves the right to remove you from the meeting if your video includes material that is inappropriate for the public or BVSD students. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. Tonight, we're just going to begin, we have many speakers on agenda topics, and I'm just going to go down the list as you gave it to me, Laura. So, our first speaker for tonight is Bonnie Sundance.
I am Bonnie Sundance, speaking personally and as facilitator of the Education and Schools Group of Right Relationship Boulder, committed to building lasting relationships with Indigenous people based on justice and collaboration. I am thankful for the 2018 BVSD Board Resolution establishing the celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day at BVSD and calling for inclusion of Indigenous curriculum. I am grateful to be working in partnership with BVSD staff to bring Indigenous voices and lesson plans into the schools. It is important to teach the nature of the doctrine of discovery and its impacts, which justified the erasure of Indigenous people and put Africans into slavery to build the economy of the U.S. Another of our members will speak tonight of our solidarity with the Bill HB 191192 on social studies standards. Tonight, I am honored to have been in beautiful collaboration with Native and Non-Natives in the writing of the land acknowledgement presented by Sam Messier tonight. I encourage the Board to continue unfolding and funding support for teachers to integrate accurate Indigenous history, culture, and current issues into the curriculum. Please provide support for teachers' professional development in this area, and for an Indigenous person to collaborate as they present this curriculum and the wisdom of relationship with land and people. We are all connected. Thank you.
Next, we have Yvette Salas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Salas, and I am the Boulder Valley School District's Title VI American Indian Education Community Liaison. I am also an Indigenous employee and a member of the Sioux-Saint-Murray Tribe of Chippewa Indians. I was honored to be on the committee that Sam Messier and Amy Newman put together to draft the land acknowledgement. It was also an honor to hear the voices of the Indigenous members of this community, and also the descendants of those who were forced from this land, where some were either moved to Wyoming, Oklahoma, or murdered. I feel that as an employee of this district and also a member of the Indigenous community, it's my duty to implore the Board of Education to do more, to follow through with the steps that began, that it begins to take. On October 8, 2019, the Board passed a resolution declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. This was a very important step, as BVSD was one of, if not the very first school district, to do so, not only in Colorado, but across the United States. BVSD has fallen short in that it has not added this day to any of the district calendars, whether it be the academic calendar that is sent home with our families, or the meal calendar that most families have hung up in their homes. It has been almost three years, and it has yet to happen. I am asking the Board to pass the land acknowledgement that includes the recommendations by members of the descendants of the affected tribes. I implore you to follow through and make sure that we are also teaching our students what the acknowledgement means and why it is necessary. Thank you for listening. Have a great day.
Next, we have Debbie Pope.
Hi, good evening. I'm Debbie Pope, and I am the CEO of the YWCA, and probably most important, the mother of four children in BVSD. My daughter Bella and son Aiden are biracial and have both had to face challenges related to racial bullying, microaggressions, and put in situations of not learning critical history, reflective and fully truthful about the contributions and challenges that have created our current society. Additionally, the YWCA works with hundreds of students and parents throughout BVSD with our Reading to End Racism program, and I'm continually overwhelmed by the students, parents, and teachers acknowledging new learning and discussion that they would not have had if they were not exposed to the program and trainings. We have also started a partnership piloting a program with Southern Hills, using literature, relationship-building, and guided curriculum and activities from BIPOC community leadership and students. My son, Aiden, was in the pilot class last year and experienced a powerful impact from the program, including sharing with me how he was learning about the contributions and historical figures of color from inventors, authors, soldiers, and activists, and it made him feel proud. Much of what he learns about in a normal week unit during Black History is a condensed version of enslavement, rarely lifting up the powerful history, leadership, and contributions of his ancestors. Equally important, his peers who are white are also learning history and being exposed to literature with a lens that breaks down intentional bias rooted in fear. Programs like this one do not teach hate or separation, and it's the opposite. They create a space of understanding and truthful learning while fostering growth for our children into a heart-centered, human-ready way to tackle the most complex issues in our country and our world. I am in full support of retaining the original intentions of House Bill 1192, and I encourage each one of you to represent us all by approving this resolution.
Next, we have Mary Faltinsky remotely, I believe.
Hello, thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Gebhardt, and distinguished Board members. My name is Mary Faltinsky, and I use she-they pronouns. I live in Boulder, and my children attended and graduated from BVSD. I'm here to give public comment on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Jax Gonzalez, who is the Program Coordinator for Oasis, an LGBTQ+ youth-serving program at Boulder County Public Health. Jax has a Master's in Curriculum and Instruction and a PhD in Sociology from CU, where they studied culturally sustaining practices in elementary education to improve health and wellness for marginalized young people. We know that marginalized youth, and specifically LGBTQ youth, are at increased risk for negative mental, behavioral, and physical health outcomes, in large part due to the stigma that can be associated with their identities. This stigma includes questioning the appropriateness of LGBTQ+ inclusive state standards and exclusion of these diverse topics in schools. Research shows that we need to provide youth with opportunities to feel affirmed and safe in our community in order to improve their health. In fact, youth who experience inclusive curriculum report lower suicidality, higher life satisfaction, and higher graduation rates. LGBTQ+ inclusive social studies standards at the elementary level could support the mental health of all children by improving the culture of schools to be affirming of LGBTQ identities, model respect and kindness for all people regardless of difference, and ultimately help the children of Colorado live healthy lives. We know that when children do not see themselves in their history books and are not recognized as human beings deserving of respect, the results can lead youth towards risky and even deadly behavior. Research by many organizations, including the Trevor Project, American Academy of Pediatrics, and the American Psychological Association, report that affirming spaces reduce attempted suicide. Thank you.
Thank you. One second, we need to turn on your mic. There you go.
There I go.
Great. All right. Now, we'll start.
Good evening. I remember when I was in elementary school almost six decades ago, and the feelings I had of exclusion, loneliness, being different, being a target of other kids' bullying, and the relentless feelings of despair, and of course, the feeling of being the only one like me. My teachers offered little guidance or underst- My teachers offered little guidance or understanding, and the curriculum lacked even a hint of acknowledgement of anything that I could relate to in terms of my own identity, as closeted as it was at that time. That was my experience in the public schools in Colorado in the 1960s. And in 2019, the state legislature passed HB 191192 to advance the curriculum in a way I could never have envisioned when I was a public school student. And today, I wonder what it must be like to have such a different, more inclusive experience as a public school student compared to my own. But as you know, the egregious recommendations coming forward for vote by the Colorado State Board of Education look nothing like the intent and spirit advanced in HB 191192. And as I stand before you tonight, I ask, what year is this? I look at the calendar, and it says 2022, but the committee’s recommendations feel like it’s 1962. Do we really want to set the clock back in time and jeopardize the well-being of young Coloradans now and into the future? I say no. All our kids deserve better. Let’s not backpedal on them, but instead, let’s advance forward and support an inclusive curriculum as intended by the legislation. Inclusion, not exclusion, because it’s the right thing to do.
Is this on? Okay. Hi, I’m Alice Rinevason, and my husband and I have a 7th grader at Lewisville Middle School and a 5th grader at Coal Creek Elementary School. I also worked, as a preschool community liaison for Boulder Valley School District at El Dorado Pre-K for three years, so I’m familiar from the outside and the inside with BVSD. In my eight years of interacting with the school district, I have not yet felt the need to speak at a school board meeting until now, and the reason that I’m here and some of my fellow parents from our school are here as well is we’re deeply concerned about the decision to force advanced math students into online learning modalities. So you’ll hear a little bit more about this from some of my friends who are here, but basically, what I wanted to say is that the virtual format is hindering their learning. When you have 30 students in a Google Meet, there’s simply no way you can gauge how they’re all doing. You will miss someone who has a confused look on their face, someone who is trying to ask a question but whose microphone has malfunctioned, someone who has failed to submit an assignment in Schoology. All of those things have actually happened to my son in the past month in his 6th grade advanced math class. He’s in 5th grade right now, and the teacher was unaware. And it’s not because she’s not a good teacher, it’s simply because of the format of virtual learning. So we brought these issues to the attention of the teacher and the classroom proctor. They’re both very responsive, and they really want to help, but they simply can’t fix the underlying problem, which is that it’s a virtual format. I know that you all are concerned, as we are, with downward trends in CMAT scores, and you should know that forcing kids into virtual classes is most likely going to push those scores lower. Enrollment in BVSD neighborhood schools is also declining, and so that’s something that I think you should take into consideration as well, since families who have the names may choose to remove their students from the schools. Thank you.
Next, we have Virtual. We have Lori Rugenstein. Should we move on, Lori? You can let me know when she clicks back in. You’ll let her know. Good. Just as you clicked out. All right, Lori, are you there? Lori, you’re muted. Lori, you’re muted.
I think I’m okay now.
Yep, we can hear you. There you are. Great.
All right, thank you. So I’m co-facilitator of the Education and Schools Working Group of Right Relationship Boulder. Our group promotes the use of educational resources that share firsthand perspectives from Indigenous people so that students can learn about the history and cultures of Indigenous people in the United States, including settler colonization and the impact it continues to have to the present day. While the work of RRB focuses on Indigenous people, we stand in solidarity with all marginalized people in communities, including BIPOC, LGBTQ+, and those with disabilities. We felt so encouraged when House Bill 191192 was signed into law in 2019 in order to fully include historically marginalized people in the Colorado Social Studies Standards for all grade levels. And we were very concerned when a social studies review committee established by the Colorado State Board of Education proposed gutting these recommendations and blatantly disregarding the intention of House Bill 1192. We fervently asked BVSD to adopt a resolution to support the intention of House Bill 191192 to fully include teaching the history and current cultures of all marginalized people and communities in the social studies curriculum from K through 12. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Next up, just watching you, Lori, to make sure we’re staying together on this. Okay, we have Carrie Whalen. And Carrie has four minutes.
Hi, everybody. I’m Carrie Whalen. I have a 5th grader at Coal Creek and a 7th grader at Lewisville Middle, and I am the daughter of a teacher and a supporter of in-person public education. I will be speaking about the BVSD decision to use online learning through Boulder Universal for advanced math students in place of a teacher in the classroom. My husband and I enrolled our daughter in in-person learning at Coal Creek because we value our neighborhood school and the relationships that our teachers create with our students. A few days before school started this year, we were informed that she would be enrolled in 6th grade math through Boulder Universal Online instead of having an in-person advanced math class, which has been offered for years at Coal Creek. We were surprised and upset by this BVSD decision to deliver online teaching to in-person students. We try to limit the amount of screen time our children have and are extremely concerned with the effectiveness of this delivery method for a core discipline like math. It seemed to be a logistics-based decision as opposed to providing intentional support for our students. This decision to deliver online classes to advanced students is at odds with the BVSD tenet of equity. To my knowledge, only advanced learners are being relegated to online classes. My 5th grader is advanced in math. This does not mean that she has special skills to adapt to a different learning modality or require the structure of in-person learning and support to succeed. This model puts her and other advanced students at a disadvantage and does not offer the same opportunities as other in-person students are given for growth. Just like her peers, advanced students are challenged by the technology, the multiple applications they have to navigate, and the lack of in-person feedback. This learning model also creates a physical disadvantage where these children are being forced to receive curriculum through a tiny Chromebook screen, creating eye strain, headaches, and fatigue. Currently, there are no documented recommendations or standards for the amount of screen time by grade level in BVSD. Math class is not the only time my 5th grader is in front of a screen during the day. We have seen a proliferation of the use of online apps and activities that create hours-long exposure to screen time during her school day. Without guidance by grade level based on best practices and potential physical impacts, teachers are left to determine this on a classroom-by-classroom basis. I’ve brought all these concerns directly to our principal, deputy superintendent, superintendent, and our school board representative, and I feel that they need to be raised at this level as well. I want to make it clear that I am not asking you to shut down our advanced math classes this year. They are in flight, and I would urge you to listen to the other parents who will make suggestions on how to improve this model. As a school district, I’m asking you to establish a consistent set of guidance and policies for our teachers on the amount of online learning and screen time that is appropriate at each grade level. These recommendations should be based on developmental research, social and emotional impact, and the physical impact on our children’s eyesight. Please be upfront and clear with families well ahead of the school year on what advanced learning options are available so that you can make informed choices about where they enroll their children. And finally, I’m asking you to address these equity gaps for advanced learners. Their growth should not be deprioritized or ignored, assuming they will just always be high performers. They need intentional support from this district, just as you give to other students. Thank you for your time tonight.
Next up, we have Liz Dial.
Hi. My name is Liz Dial. I’m a mother of a 1st and 4th grader at Coal Creek Elementary and a 6th grader at LMS. I am also the PTA president at Coal Creek Elementary. When you read BVSD’s mission statement earlier today, it said to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive. All children. So now I want everybody to take a moment and imagine a room about 1/3 the size. Now place 29-year-old kids in it who have been identified as being top achievers in math. Put them in front of a small screen. Put headphones on them. Get rid of all of the research that tells us that manipulatives are great for math understanding. Throw out all of the research that tells us that having class discussions where students can share their thought processes for math help them better understand and learn. Then you have an idea of what BVSD has provided our advanced learners for accelerated math. Let me say emphatically, it is not okay for BVSD to outsource our child’s education to a model that is in complete contrast to what we enrolled in at our elementary schools and neighborhoods. So here’s a little bit of feedback that I have. First of all, provide comprehensive information to parents so that we can make informed decisions, rather than letting us know on the third day of school that you enrolled our children in a class that we never approved of. Second, if this is the only model that you can do, make sure that it’s integrated with our neighborhood schools. Third, empower these host schools to utilize the resources that they have, whether it be printers to make sheets that are online, or it’s manipulatives, or it’s a class discussion, or homework help. Finally, get input and feedback on the offerings from parents and the in-school math teachers. Thank you.
Emma Rohatsky.
Hi, members of the Board. Thank you for your time. My name is Emma Rohatsky, and I am a parent of four children at three BVSD schools this year. This is our 10th year in the district. I’m also a former college professor, familiar with both in-person and online learning formats. Tonight, I want to share my deep concern around online learning for BVSD advanced math students. Up until a few days before school started this year, we were under the impression that our 5th grade son would be allowed to attend a middle school for 7th grade math, as has been done for many children in the past. This was not the case. Despite a very responsive principal and dedicated online learning instructor, we are again struggling with the online learning environment. What’s more, his online math class is 100% overlapping with 5th grade social studies. This has resulted in frequent anxiety, frustration, and tears, all predictable and avoidable. Please stand by your equity principles and allow all children in need of extra support to experience that support in person. Assuming that advanced learners will do fine in an online format is reminiscent of the model minority stereotypes that have plagued U.S. immigration and refugee policies. It justifies the exclusion of students in accelerated math from in-person learning and also homogenizes unfairly and pits advanced and remedial learners against each other for the limited assistance offered on-site in elementary schools. Further, online learning is 160 minutes of math instruction a week, not comparable to in-person instruction for 260 minutes a week. Finally, online math has removed my child from another core subject altogether. He will start middle school, having largely taught himself social studies. In sum, there is no equity in this programmatic decision. Please provide an explanation as to why qualified students are abruptly, with no warning, unable to attend middle school math classes with parent-provided transportation during regular math times. I’ve requested this information in a letter I shared with the Board, in calls to our principal, and with Dr. Wajaka, and have no answer. Ostensibly, this is supposed to be the equitable solution; however, it is far from that. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Anna Gilfoyle. Sorry if I butchered your last name.
My name is Ann Gilfoyle, and I am here to urge you, as I actually know many of you are probably sympathetic to the problems with the social studies revisions that go against the law and also go against the committee that was set up specifically after the law to make some revisions to the standards. And I know that Superintendent Rob Anderson has also a strong commitment to the issues that this addresses. So I’m actually here to ask you to be protesters, and you know far better than I do what your connections are to the state board, to other school boards around in Colorado. And I ask that you make a big effort to convince the state school board not to accept these revisions. And I also encourage you to proceed here with standards that follow what has already been done in the district in terms of BIPOC people and LGBTQIA people so that the students in our district have the benefit of learning about their history, about feeling included and seen, and about the history of the contributions that their people have made. So that’s my ask. Thank you.
Next, we have Katie French. She gave her minutes to Carrie Whalen. Sorry, they are not next to each other. Next, we have Remote.
Hello. I am a resident of Boulder, and it is my understanding that BVSD is considering adopting a resolution to support the full inclusion of historically marginalized people in K through 12 social studies, and I fully support you doing that. I supported the passage of inclusive curriculum standards at the State House, and I am sad that we have to fight to ensure that they remain in the curriculum. I have a 6- and 8-year-old in BVSD schools, 1st and 3rd grade, and they have several transgender and gender nonconforming friends their age, and it is not up to me alone to help them have the words and basic information they need to treat their friends and strangers they meet with the basic respect and humanity that we all expect of each other. that we all expect of each other. That is a shared responsibility. That is education. And my kids, as I said, are first and third graders in BVSD. I require support for these conversations beyond what I offer at home in helping to normalize, for my children, the many different variations of human relations, relationships, and genders that exist in this world. It is exactly at this age that children have questions, and it's imperative that we respond to their questions in ways that do not patronize, trivialize, or worst of all, pretend that their questions have no answers or are not valid. Exclusion is an intentional act. Exclusion is an intentional act, and that act has consequences for children, parents, community members who do not fit into the mainstream, traditionally depicted types of genders or relationships that exist. And I suspect that most people don't even know that there is this concerted effort to remove these topics from the standards, and there are countless people that won't be at these school board meetings, they won't be writing to the state ed board, but they will be directly impacted. So fight for this inclusion, side with retaining the original intent of HB 1192. Thank you.[672.31][672.31](MUSIC).
And he was given two minutes by Julie Abrams, so he has four minutes.
Hi. I'm Billy Mertens, and I have a daughter in seventh grade and a son in fourth grade at Coal Creek Elementary. My son was excited to be entering the fourth, fifth-grade combined math class this year. Unfortunately, we were informed more than a week into the school year that he was enrolled in Boulder University. Math used to be my son's favorite subject. At this time, it is simply a point of frustration. The online course does not suit his learning style, and after talking to many parents, it seems it doesn't suit most of the kids in the class. I teach at CU Boulder, and in addition to my in-person classes, I have been teaching online classes at CU for 15 years. With the help of some of the leading professionals in online education, I believe that my introductory course, not advanced, is, after years and years of work, finally on par with in-person equivalents. That class is for college students who have other options. I know from experience that only a small set of adult students learn well in online classes, and the research suggests that an even smaller set of children can possibly succeed in this setting, regardless of their knowledge of the subject matter. The format of the advanced math class is developmentally inappropriate for this age group, and I am concerned about the fact that my son and all fourth graders need to be seen, heard, and understood by their teacher, which is impossible in a Google Meet with 30-plus kids. What's more, this is not an example of a well-designed online course, and the part-time teacher, through no fault of her own, seems overwhelmed with too many students. She seems caring, but this is simply the wrong format. I teach math, and I have been astonished at the shortcomings of this particular class and the complete lack of willingness to try and improve the situation. There have been technical issues since day one, and often students have difficulty asking questions. There are three different online platforms being used for the students to read problems and enter answers. Each of these software systems asks that the answers be given in slightly different formats. In one, if your answer includes .0 on the end, it is marked incorrect, but in another, it is not. Many times, technically accurate answers are marked wrong. The teacher has said she prefers the online homework and quizzes because it gives her a host of metrics to analyze the kid's progress, but if the data she is reading does not truly reflect their understanding, then it is useless. The district has put us in an untenable position. As parents, we are being forced to potentially short-change our kids by holding them back from an accelerated program, and risk our kids becoming bored or disengaged, or instead keeping them in an online learning model that is not effective nor developmentally appropriate. This math class has caused our family and many others I've spoken to to strongly reconsider the value of staying with BVSD. Several of us have offered suggestions on how to improve the course, and these have been completely ignored. We have asked repeatedly that at least homework have an offline option, as the kids are already exposed to too much screen time. We are already teaching our son the material at home, and the added step of being online consumes even more of our valuable time. We have asked that the teacher meet with the students so that they might be more comfortable asking questions, but that request has fallen on deaf ears. I don't believe it's her decision otherwise. I ask that you immediately find some alternative to this system and start treating advanced learners equitably. Thank you.[916.73][916.73](APPLAUSE).
Next, we have Vanessa Marks.
My name is Vanessa Marks, and I have a daughter in second grade at Superior Elementary School. I am also on the NAACP Education Committee, and I support DEI committees across our district and St. Brain as well. And I am here to support a resolution for the original recommendations of the 1192 commission. And I want to give one small little example of what this could mean for my own child's education, as well as education for all of our children. I know that our mission is to support civically engaged future leaders, and to do that, our children need a complete and accurate and inclusive history taught in their classrooms. Last week, my daughter brought home this workbook, "Living in Superior, Colorado: Learning About History Is Understanding Where We Live and Who Is Here Before Us." This book, and everything my daughter's been taught so far, pretends that history started with coal miners. There is no mention of any indigenous people in my daughter's classroom right now. That's not how we raise civically-minded people in this country. It's not how we should be operating. So no shade to Superior and our teachers. They are incredible, and we need curriculum with standards that provide the support to our teachers that they need to teach this kind of inclusive curriculum and provides accountability for them to do so. Thank you so much.[1027.38][1027.38](APPLAUSE).
Next, we have Patty Delgado, who has been given an extra two minutes because she's going to speak in English and Espanol.
Buenas noches, Presidenta Gebhardt, miembros del Consejo Educativo, Dr. Anderson. Mi nombre es Patty Delgado, pero nombre ella. Y soy muy orgullosa de ser la presidenta de Boulder Valley Education Association. Estoy aquí esta noche para anunciar que el Comité Ejecutivo de BVEA apoya con entusiasmo el plan para necesidades críticas que estarán las boletas de votación este noviembre con el número designado 5A. El lugar donde nuestros estudiantes aprenden es imprescindible para una experiencia educativa positiva. Este bono evitará que el distrito tenga que usar fondos operativos para satisfacer las necesidades críticas. Es probable que los costos asociados con estos proyectos aumenten en los próximos años, por lo que la decisión de optar por el bono es un enfoque fiscalmente responsable. Nuestra comunidad siempre ha apoyado a nuestros estudiantes y al distrito, y por eso le pedimos a nuestra comunidad que continúe apoyando al distrito y que puedan apoyar este noviembre el bono. Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. My pronouns are she and her. I am the proud president of Boulder Valley Education Association. I am here this evening to announce that the BVEA's executive board enthusiastically endorses the BVSD Critical Needs Bond that will be listed and in November ballot as 5A. The place where our students learn is essential for a positive educational experience. The bond will prevent the district from having to use operational funds to meet the critical needs. The costs associated with these projects is only likely to increase in the coming years, so the decision to go for the bond is the fiscally sound approach. Our community has always supported our students in our district, and so we ask our community to support the BVSD bond this November. Thank you.[1207.33][1207.33](APPLAUSE).
Next, we have Amanda Cherry.
Thank you so much to the Board of Education for considering adopting the important measure regarding inclusive, fully-inclusive social studies curriculum. My name is Amanda Cherry. My pronouns are she/her. I'm a language arts teacher at Southern Hills Middle School and the parent of a third grader at Mesa Elementary. I've been dedicated to teaching an inclusive curriculum for many years. I believe when we intentionally create inclusive spaces through our instructional choices, we make our classrooms welcoming for all students. We prepare students to engage in a diverse world in thoughtful and connected ways. We help them become empathetic humans ready to tackle the challenging work of creating a more just society, and we also save lives. In order to create these spaces, it's vital that students see themselves, their families, and their histories reflected everywhere, from our textbooks to our classroom walls. As challenges to incorporating an inclusive curriculum mount, it's all the more important that those who hold the power stand behind the work of individual educators like me. When the Board of Education sends the message that equity, humanity, and connection are at the heart of our work, that we collectively stand for inclusivity because we want a better world for all, teachers like myself have the foundation they need to do this challenging, heart-centered, and vital work in the classroom. We cannot enact broader, lasting systemic change without support at all levels. Thank you.[1326.41][1326.41](APPLAUSE).
And we have Judy Stone.
Thank you, Kathy, board members, and Dr. Anderson. I'm so happy to be here tonight. I've been an educator in BVSD for 17 years, and I'm very well-trained. I had the opportunity to train in Orton-Gillingham clip-reading programs. I was in the Next Generation Science curriculum, as well as working with A Queer Endeavor for five years. I'm here tonight in support of our social studies curriculum. As a teacher of kindergarten, first, and second graders, I have that opportunity and that obligation to teach children about their first community. Many of my students' first community includes a person, a parent, an uncle, a brother, or sister, who identifies as LGBTQIA. I have had many students tell me that this was the first time in kindergarten, first or second grade, that they've ever read a book that featured two moms, that ever read a book that had a family with somebody who did not identify under a gender binary. Working at a K-8, or pre-K-8, I apologize, I have the opportunity to also work with our GSA at the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, and our GSA is Gay Straight Activists. Our students have decided that they want to make BVSD, and my school in particular, Aspen Creek, a more inclusive and belonging school. When I showed some of my eighth graders the books that I have available to me as a first grade teacher, they were shocked. They had not read these books or had these books read to them. And as many speakers before me have said, if we don't see ourselves represented, we don't see ourselves as belonging. So I applaud us, all of us, for continuing the good work. I will ask that we continue to provide appropriate training for our early educators, middle school educators, and high school educators, an inclusive and belonging curriculum. Thank you so much for your time.[1454.01][1454.01](APPLAUSE).
So that concludes our public participation. We appreciate hearing from all of the speakers tonight. Thank you very much. We'll move next to the next item on our agenda, which is board communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Richard?
Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank all of the speakers for coming out tonight. It was great hearing from you, and I want to thank everyone that's in support of the social studies curriculum, as well as the land acknowledgement. And I'm anxious to find out a little bit more as it relates to the online, in-person math classes. So a couple of things that I want to say is that I too appreciate the law that was established a few years ago, and the fact that it really dragged on as it relates to committees trying to put this work together and bring it up to the State Board of Education, and then having the committee just trash whatever the law was indicating and wanting them to do. I, for one, will be going to the State Board of Education meetings on behalf of the school district, or myself personally. I don't know if I'll get permission from the school district, but I will certainly be there and supporting and trying to convince our State Board of Education, as well as our commissioner and everyone involved, that what they're doing is really against the state law that was passed some years ago. And I would encourage everybody that feels the same way to be there at the State Board of Education meeting whenever it happens. I'm not sure when it's going to happen. I think it's going to happen in December, when that decision's going to be made. In the meantime, we do have individual State Board members that everybody can get ahold of. All you have to do is Google that particular website, and you can find out who those people are. We are represented here in our district, Congressional District 2, by a State Board member, so I would encourage you to find out who that person is, and get ahold of that person, and make sure she hears from you, too. Short of that, in terms of protesting, I agree with you, Ann. We do need to be a little bit more protesting in terms of what's happening in our curriculums. But a thought that occurs to me is, regardless of what happens, let's say, for example, that it goes through the State Board of Education, and they approve whatever standards are being recommended, that does not prohibit us from doing what we need to do that is right for our students here in Boulder Valley School District, and we will continue doing that. Thank you very much.
Lisa?
Sure. I want to thank everybody who called in and spoke tonight, and I want to thank my colleague, Richard, for all of those impassioned remarks. I don't have more now, but I did want to say to anybody listening that if we are light on comments now, it's only because Mutton V's items are coming up on the agenda later, and I anticipate more discussion around them then, when we address our resolution around LGBTQ curriculum representation, et cetera. That'll happen later this evening, and I think discussion then will be more robust. I really appreciate the comments tonight.
Nicole?
I just want to say I'm endlessly impressed by the dedication our district has to authentically engage our students and our staff in their voices, and by our students that came tonight from both Equity Council and Title IX group. The dedication that they have taken to this really challenging and highly vulnerable work is commendable, and we'll continue to make our schools and our districts safer places to both learn and to work. So thank you for all that student engagement. Secondly, I want to thank our public participants tonight for taking the time to share your perspectives on our curriculum and for challenging us to do better. Clearly, we have some work to do. I'll save my comments on the resolution for later tonight, but I wanted to say that as a parent of students who took advanced math classes, one in person at a middle school as a fifth grader, and one through BU Link as a fifth grader, I share your frustrations with that process and have been engaging in conversations about how we can make our math pathways more equitable and more consistent across the district. And as a board member, knowing that we have to manage challenges with transportation and declining enrollment and how all those things feed together, so it is not an easy problem, but is one that I am committed, and I hope our board is committed, to working to solve, to make sure all of our students have access to highly rigorous and challenging and engaging math classes, no matter what school they attend in this district. So thanks for that.
Katie, do you have anything?
I just want to thank everybody who spoke, those who were participating virtually, and those who are here. I had no idea that the math problem existed, so I'm so glad that you all came and brought it to our attention. And again, I want to congratulate the students who were here with us earlier today. It takes a lot for a student to be able to get up and speak in front of adults, especially adults in authority. So I guess most of them are gone now, but I just wanted to thank them again anyway. And thank you for those who have spoken out about the social studies standards, and we will be discussing this more later on.
Beth?
I'll jump in here and join the chorus. I want to thank everyone tonight for your comments coming in, and everyone that called in as well. We certainly have heard a lot tonight about attacks on inclusivity in our curriculum, and we take the responsibility, I think Richard said this best, of educating students very seriously here, and creating civically-minded students is super important, and we will be having a more robust conversation, as everyone else has already said. And that's all I wanted to share.
And I'll be brief. I'll add my thanks to everyone who stepped out tonight to take time out of your schedule to stand. I think hopefully we'll pass the resolution in solidarity with us. I think this is going to, and to your point, take some being active and pushing a little bit. From what I'm reading in the newspaper, I don't have any inside story as to where this is going to go, or what's going to happen. Our school district attorney and our superintendent may shudder, but I agree with you, Richard. I think these are guidelines. I don't think they prohibit us from offering the curriculum that we believe is the appropriate curriculum for our community and for our students, and maybe we can continue to be leaders in this as we go forward. And so I really look forward to the work that we're going to do, and working in partnership with the teachers and the community who have stepped out to help us try to figure out how to make this work for everybody, because obviously, we believe very strongly it's the right thing to do. So thank you, everyone, for showing up, and we'll look forward to further conversation together. Is that it? Any other comments by board members? All right, so we will now move on to our first information item. Dr. Anderson, I think it is an ERP update, and I have to say, just made me laugh, Rob calls it every, every Rob problem. Every problem is Rob's for ERP. We just have to kind of play with the letters there, but I appreciate Rob owning this, but I also am looking forward to the update from everybody, so. You know what? Frank, we need a quick break, a quick comfort break. Sorry. Rob, I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce the next, or the first information item.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt, and thank you for those who stuck around to see this presentation. You'll be excited. I will tell you that, board members, we have been working, we have been working on the implementation of the ERP. The work started even prior to my arrival, a little bit over four years ago, when the Board approved the funds to begin to make this switch. I've been a part of two districts, this being the second one, that went through the incredibly intense process of replacing an ERP, and it's one of the most challenging things, I think, a large business, corporation, nonprofit, you name it, can go through. And it's one of the largest employers in Boulder County. It is with over 4,000 employees and tons and tons of end-users. I can tell you that our implementation has been incredibly complicated. It's an example, and I'm going to let Frank take it here in a moment, but it's an example of you have an entire dedicated team with experienced vendor partners and consultants working on change management, working on implementation, and you think you're doing all of the right things. And in both instances, when you go live, there's tons of blind spots and some kind of working together to kind of, to figure out, even though we felt like we were doing so many of the right things, where did the system start to fail? So it just becomes incredibly complicated. I did send a letter out to all employees several weeks ago apologizing for the difficulties that this implementation has caused for our people, and I think we've ironed out some of those issues. And, believe it or not, there are actually really good things that have been happening because of the implementation of our ERP. And so I have our team here, you know, board members, we are always going to be transparent. We're going to talk about the good, bad, and ugly, but want to make sure that the Board is informed, our community's informed, and where we are with the implementation of the ERP. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our new CIO. You get to be new CIO for a little bit while there. Frank Elmore.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, Board President Gephardt, board members, Superintendent Dr. Anderson. My colleagues and I are pleased to present to you an update on our continuing implementation of the M4 ER Enterprise Resource Planning System. First, let me remind you exactly what an Enterprise Resource Planning System is. Commonly known as an ERP, an ERP is a type of software system that helps organizations automate and manage core business processes for optimal performance. ERP software coordinates the flow of data between an organization's business processes, providing a single source of truth, and streamlining operations across the entirety of the organization. It's capable of linking an organization's financials, supply chain, operations, commerce, reporting, and human resource activities on a single technology-based platform. So here's a quick look back at the project timeline. We initially started with the Lawson ERP back in 2004, and it served the district well for many years. In 2013, we were notified that the version of Lawson that we were currently utilizing had been identified to be decommissioned in 2017, giving us adequate lead time to find a new solution. In 2016, we looked at several alternatives and selected the M4 ERP solution. We had initially had planned an October of 2019 project kickoff, but we paused the project for a year in order to address competing priorities as a result of other in-progress system implementations and organizational structural reviews. The project initially kicked off in October of 2020, with implementation beginning in early 2021. And we had originally planned to go live on the new system in January of 2022, but pushed that date to March 28th of this year. That brings us to today. So with systems as large and as complex as Dr. Anderson had mentioned before, as an ERP is, there are always challenges during the implementation. One of the challenges organizations face when they implement a new ERP is it forces the company, or the organization, or the school district to review their current business practices and re-engineer those processes to make the use of the fully-integrated nature of the new system. Basically, we ask people to change the way they do work, and managing change is typically difficult. That said, we too are experiencing challenges with our M4 implementation. Chief among these challenges are payroll inconsistencies. Again, with a new system comes new processes and new data flows to integrate. In order to address the sheer number of complex processes we currently utilize, and how these processes should seamlessly flow to the human resources and workforce management modules of the new system. Fortunately, most of these ERP issues can be addressed by continuing to involve M4 with ongoing system updates and possibly changing some of our own complex processes. For paycheck-specific concerns, Dr. Anderson has made it very clear here. If a person tells us that they have a paycheck shortage, they will be paid within 24 to 48 hours. Additionally, we are experiencing challenges in getting people hired in a reasonable amount of time. July and August of this year were something of a perfect storm for us. These two months are always chaotic, and they represent the busiest hiring season, and opening of school, and this year, the first time using a new system. We are also seeing issues with employee records not transferring properly. To effectively address this problem, we are working to update some of our data integrations and developing new processes to ensure clean and accurate data is shared across modules and systems. And our HR team is working closely with departments and schools to update their employee Now, I don't want you to think that the project is experiencing nothing but challenges. We have seen a number of successful aspects of the new system. A few examples would be employees can now clock in and clock out using a variety of different systems, no longer reliant on paper timesheets. Employees can now control their own personal data, including updating their own baking information and canceling and/or changing approved leave. Our benefits are now fully integrated into the new ERP, and we can now accurately track comp time using the new system. Additionally, many financial functions are now fully automated, including payment card processing, invoice approvals, and employee reimbursements. So what are we doing to successfully address the challenges we are seeing? First, we are engaging directly with the M4 executive leadership teams in order to ensure that they are applying the proper type and amount of resources required to make us successful. As I mentioned before, we are providing continual and ongoing training on all levels of employees. We are identifying what resources we need to assist in addressing the current shortfalls in staffing and technical support in order to close the gap in submitted trouble tickets. And we are revisiting our initial system configuration items to ensure we are not inadvertently causing some of our own problems. In implementing systems of this size and complexity, the key to future success lies in providing ongoing training. Training and resources will be provided in multiple ways and modalities to ensure each employee knows how to best work within our new ERP system to accomplish the tasks that they are assigned. Here you see the updated project timeline. Now that we are past the first month of school opening, we should be able to better address project issues and get us back on track to essentially complete the system rollout during summer of next year. We will continue to provide constant and ongoing communication with our key stakeholders throughout the district, utilizing a number of methods, including weekly drop-in sessions, providing a weekly ERP daily digest, and keeping the project website up to date with the latest information surrounding the new system. Dr. Anderson, that completes our presentation. We stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Frank, and thanks to James and Bill for the support that they provided throughout that presentation. Board President Gephardt, we're happy to answer any questions the Board might have in regards to some of the challenges, successes, and kind of where we move forward.
Kitty?
Yeah, I'm curious, how common are the problems that we are experiencing implementing the ERP?
Actually, the problems that we are seeing are pretty typical of the challenges that organizations go through when they are implementing these types of systems. We've seen repeated notifications out of school districts like LA Unified, who are experiencing far worse issues than we are. So what we are seeing today is very typical of implementations of this type.
Did we give employees any kind of heads up to expect problems? I know you weren't here then.
Before my time.
I would say, you know, the expectation wasn't that there would be issues. So the trainings that were occurring, information sessions, there was a lot of training that occurred leading up to go live, was all to prevent problems. It was only after the fact that they started cropping up.
Yeah, I'd like to get that you don't want to start out with negative expectations, but also if people understand that this is common and that we're working on it, perhaps without some frustration.
Rob?
Just to respond to that, Kitty, you know, it is, I just don't, I need to just acknowledge the significant impact this is having on many of our employees, our office managers, registrars, right? You know, think about, you've worked successfully in a role in a system, doing a job for a decade, then a system changes, and the things you used to be able to do flawlessly and quickly now take long amounts of time, and then sometimes your data's being erased, sometimes it's there, sometimes it isn't there. And so I do think that we, I don't think that we signaled that this was going to be perfect as a rollout. Certainly, we had high hopes, as you always do in taking on big projects. I don't think that we signaled, especially to our leaders, that it would be perfect. But, you know, the pain that we're feeling from our employees is it's taking a lot of time to do things that used to not take up that much time, and they don't have the time. So as I'm going out to schools and I'm doing my roundtables, this is a topic that we're talking about, and so I'm trying to explain what's happening, and that's why we're apologizing. But I just, we need to acknowledge that we've got a ways to go. I think that Frank brings us a level of experience in implementing large systems that we can all be grateful for, and that under his leadership, he's made this the number-one priority in IT as we move forward, making sure that he's advocating for the resources that we need, the people that we need, being able to connect directly with the executives of the program from Lawson through M4 to come help us problem-solve. And so it's impacting many of our employees pretty deeply. It's getting better, incrementally getting better, but I do have confidence in our team that we'll be able to get this back on track. It's just going to take a little bit of time.
Anyone else with questions? I am going to take a moment of presidential privilege and honor Bill Sutter, who is now the esteemed president of an organization I forgot the name of, but it's national. So congratulations, Bill. I think Rob knows the name of the organization. Because you went to see him.
I do. So in actuality, Bill is just wrapping up his tenure as president of ASBO, the Association of School Business Officials International. And so I had the opportunity, board members, as you know, to be able to watch Bill be honored by business professionals from across the globe. That is no joke. Folks from, we met folks from South Africa, we met folks from all across the country, and it was so great to see how respected Bill is by folks everywhere. And his tenure as president was just incredibly successful and a trying time for business officials across the country and the world. And so, as I know we're going a little bit off the track here, but congrats, Bill, we're really proud of you.
And then I have one question for you, Bill. When I hear M4 people coming and timelines, and how far off budget are we? Do we know yet?
Not too bad.
Will we be able to get one of your budget updates a little better sense of what not too bad looks like?
Yes. We'll also be including some updates in the revised budget in January to include for that.
Okay. That's, I just hear dollar signs clicking, as you say, we've got M4 people coming and extended timelines, and I'm sure, I mean, we don't really have a choice but to make it work, but I would just love to have a sense of what that's doing to the budget.
Make no mistake, when we're bringing Make no mistake, when we're bringing in N4 executives, it is for them to help us fix a system that is not working as designed. So it's on their dime.
I'm guessing that they don't see it always 100% that way, so we'll have to see.
We can debate that.
All right. Any other questions, Board members? All right, we will move on to our next item. Thank you very much. Our final information item is the legislative update. Bill, I wouldn't go too far because I have a question for you also, because between the last meeting and this meeting, we had the revenue forecast. And I know I get talked long about it, but the bottom line for me was that after everything, there's Tabor refunds and a sum total of $85 million for the legislature to disperse amongst everything. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes, that's, as they presented it, I think a little additional piece to that, though, is that because the Tabor refunds are in place, that the state is doing much better above the Tabor cap, that there is room for some economic slowdown if that were to occur and not impact what the state has built into that budget with the 85 million or 88 or whatever it was available. So it's, there is some cushion there at the state level for the potential economic slowdown that is, expected is a bit of a strong word, cautionary optimism, I would say.
And the reason that this forecast, the reason I brought it up, is this is the budget that the JBC uses in trying to look at their initial budget setting as they start talking about it in November, so it's an important budget forecast for us for going forward.
Definitely, it'll feed into the governor's budget, and there was some difference between OSPB and the Ledge Council projection, but really at that margin above in that Tabor refund area, so not really impacting what the initial outlook for next year is.
All right, thanks. That's all I had on legislative updates, I thought it was important to start paying attention to what those numbers look like. Thanks, Bill. All right, now we have action items. So we'll do the consent grouping first. 7.1 Personnel Items, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, September 13, 2022, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, September 13, 2022, Regular Meeting, 7.4 Approval of Minutes, September 20, 2022, Special Meeting, 7.5 Approval of Placement Agreement, 7.6 Intergovernmental Agreement Between Boulder Valley School District Number RE2 and City of Boulder for the Joint Use of Facilities, 7.7 Grant Boulder High Adelante Mental Health City of Boulder Health Equity Fund 2022, and 7.8 Grant Boulder High Adelante Tutoring and Support City of Boulder Human Services Fund. Are there any items Board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Don't move.
Kitty, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion? Rob, can you talk for a second about Adelante? Because I think we have two programs at Boulder High. We have Adelante and we have ADV, Avid. And I think Adelante is in partnership with the city, is my understanding of what that I just think it's, when we start talking equity and those, I think just a two-second description of what Adelante is would be helpful, I think.
Absolutely, and I'm sure Dr. Hill could give probably a better description of all that Adelante does for our students. It's a program, supports our Latinx students at Boulder High School. I want to say this is an annual grant that we get from the Health Equity Fund to help support that program. Adelante is taught by Michelle Carpenter, right? And for those of you that know Michelle, longtime, really successful teacher at Boulder High, provides mentoring, tutoring, social, emotional learning and support for many of our Latinx students at Boulder High School. And so we appreciate our partnership with the city and through their Health Equity Fund to continue to provide the grants for both mental health services and the tutoring and support that are here on the action, on the consent agenda.
I see Dr. Gill nodding. I just think it's a good example of the partnership that we have with the city to try to help just provide a little bit extra support for some of our Latinx students that are at Boulder High. And the reason we don't have it at all our schools is we get this through the city, through a grant with the city, so. All right, Laura, can you call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, our next, our first action item for tonight is approval of the 22-23 District Accountability Committee membership. Do we have a motion? So moved by Nicole, seconded by Kitty. Conversation. Laura, can you call the roll?
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zest?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on, we have the study items. The first item for study is our 2023 BVSD Legislative Platform. Kathleen, do you have some introduction, introductory comments that you can give to
Yes, thank you. This is the 22 BVSD Legislative Platform. The board will recall that in the prioritization sessions that we had, the board wanted to make sure that this item was addressed early in the school year so that the board would be able to express its position, not just on items that will be before the Colorado State Legislature, but to address issues like you heard public comment on tonight, issues that arise before the State Board of Education and other state and federal policymaking entities. So the red lines indicate revisions since last year. This item is on study tonight and will be brought for action at the board's next meeting. I did receive some good grammar checks and editing and suggestions that I'll be sure to incorporate. The primary elements in this red line, the board wanted to make sure that we articulated the board's philosophy for acting on resolutions so that the public would understand those issues on which the board may take a position, and to think about the process by which those are brought forward. So that's in the very first paragraph. As you look through the remaining pages, we deleted a couple of items that were no longer relevant. I need to take another look at the preschool language and the para item, so I'll have corrections in that for the next time. You will see item 2.11, 211, talks about flexible funding. We also, in the educational programming section, included the board's interest in a state accountability system that addresses the achievement of students in historically marginalized groups. That was a specific item that the board requested. Also, that we take a look at the state assessment system to make sure that that assessment system is not creating a disproportionate impact in outcomes for students on the basis of race, gender, and disability. And then the last item in that section, 3.7, supports the resolution the board is also considering tonight, supporting the inclusion of the representation of LGBTQ individuals and other historically marginalized groups in school curriculum, state standards, and opposes any effort to identify this representation as controversial or part of comprehensive human sexuality education. And those are the highlights that the board had requested that are in this draft.
Board members, any questions? Kitty?
Yes.
It was intended to address additional flexibility that the board had requested in circumstances of declining enrollment. So that's how that sentence will be finished for your review at the next meeting. I was just checking to make sure you read it thoroughly. I wasn't, I'm sorry, I omitted that language.
Choose your own adventure. Any other questions about the legislative platform? So this is a living document, so even if we approve this at the next session, we will be able to amend it going forward. I do have one question that I would like to add under Finance, and I think it would fit under, hold on, I'm finding it. Maybe under Adequate Ongoing Funding, which is a request for an actual study for the actual costs of providing an education. State's never done that, and we just continue to pretend that the amount of money that we're allocating is sufficient without actually looking at what the actual funding needs and costs are, and I would request that the state actually undertake such a study to figure that out. And then Kathleen and Kitty, who's a good wordsmith, I don't think this title is the right title now, since it's guiding us from more than just the legislature, so if we could come up with something that's more expansive for what this is, I just think it would be helpful to have a different title, or a hyphen, or a slash, or something to give this, so people understand to look here not just for the legislative platform, but for, like you said, issues that we may be raising with the state board, and so, just a different title. All right, anything else? All right, next for study is our final draft calendars, 23, 24, 24, 25.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, President Gephardt, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. I am happy to be here this evening to share with you the draft academic calendars for the school years 23, 24, and 24, 25. I will also share the process through which the draft calendars were created and revised. As a reminder, our academic calendars are created in alignment with Board Policy IC and ICA and our set of collaboratively developed guiding principles. The timeline that we have followed for completion of this process is one that you will recognize from previous years. We began by taking our current academic calendars and overlaying them onto these years. In the spring, the representative groups that are identified in the upper right-hand corner of this slide were given the opportunity to provide feedback and offer suggestions for revisions. The Calendar Task Force then reviewed all the feedback and determined which input is in alignment with board policy and the guiding principles and could be considered as possible revisions to the calendars. The group then discussed any ripple effects the challenges, the changes could have either positively or negatively on students, families, and staff. Based on the feedback from staff and community, multiple proposed changes are included in these draft calendars. And then finally, that process has led us here this evening with the presentation of these proposed calendars. I do want to take a moment to thank these members of the task force, as they not only spent many hours in multiple meetings, but also for their thoughtful consideration and their intentionality around the consideration of input and possible revisions for the calendars. They spent many hours working to be reflective of the needs and make sure that our calendars reflect the preferences and needs of our students, families, and staff. So to that end, we've worked hard to create the proposed calendars that you have for your consideration. They meet the requirements of Policy IC and ICA and our guiding principles, and we've incorporated many changes based on the input from our representative groups. So the calendars that you have for consideration include these requirements. Students are in school 172 days. There are four conference exchange days for licensed staff. There are additional teacher workdays and teacher professional days, and the holidays that are included in our policies are reflected in the calendars. In addition, the guiding principles are also reflected in the draft calendars, that the calendar is the same for all levels. We limit whenever possible partial school weeks. We coordinate the calendar with the University of Colorado Boulder and St. Braine School District. The first semester must end prior to winter break. The school year must end prior to Memorial Day. The beginning of the school year should be as late in August as possible. And we avoid scheduling breaks that conflict with standardized testing. So, to that end, you will see the proposed changes of the calendars based on the input from our groups. The first one addresses two pieces of input, which is to spread out professional learning days for our educators and to shorten winter break. Hence, the movement of one of the professional development days that traditionally follows immediately winter break is moved to October. Our second change also encompasses two pieces of input, which is to limit whenever possible the number of partial weeks and the desire expressed by families to attach the February PD day to Presidents' Day so that there is just one partial week in February instead of two. Next, we always work to balance the length of the semesters as best we can while engaging in the very challenging work of aligning our breaks with those of St. Braine and CU Boulder. To that end, we have placed winter break in the latter part of December and into January. Finally, we are proposing the recognition of the federal Juneteenth holiday as a holiday for summer learning. I do want to spend a couple of minutes talking about our guiding principle of aligning our breaks to those of both CU Boulder and St. Braine. There was a bit of clunkiness, admittedly, in this last go-around of calendar cycle regarding our spring break alignment. This stems from the fact that the academic calendars for CU Boulder, BVSD, and St. Braine are all developed at different times and in the past without preliminary conversation. This resulted in our being aligned with St. Braine's spring break this year and next, but not CU Boulder's. Knowing that so many of our families are connected with CU Boulder, a change in spring break dates for this year was approved last spring by our board, and we shared our change with St. Braine for their consideration. I have now had multiple conversations with our community partners, and I am looking forward to increased collaboration and conversation in the future around the development of our calendars. Therefore, I do want to share information about both winter break and spring break alignment for the calendars of 23, 24, and 24, 25. As you can see, our proposed winter breaks are aligned with both CU Boulder and St. Braine, and our spring breaks are the same as CU Boulder. However, to date, St. Braine has not decided to change their spring break to realign with our revised dates and those of CU Boulder. In addition, they have not yet created their 24, 25 calendar, hence the TBD on this slide. However, I have shared our tentative dates with them for their consideration as they work to create their 24, 25 calendar. And upon approval from our board, I will share these calendars with both CU Boulder and St. Braine for their information. Finally, we have worked for years to define our guiding principle that states, start the year as late in August as possible and possibly after Labor Day. So therefore, families have been queried in the last two rounds of the calendar development cycle about their preference about a before or after Labor Day start, while letting them know the implications for both winter break and the end of the school year. And this has been the consistent data that we have received. Our families have a statistically significant preference for our current calendar dates. As a result, we are going to consider this question asked and answered for the time being, and we will continue to develop academic calendars with the school year beginning prior to Labor Day. So, to bring us on home, the proposed calendars that you have for your consideration are in alignment with Board Policy IC and ICA and our guiding principles, and the Calendar Task Force group has incorporated changes based on input from our representative groups. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions or take any feedback that you have before these calendars come back to you for approval at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Robin. Nicole?
Thanks, Robin. I have a few questions. Can you share how many days are in the first semester and the second semester of those calendars?
I sure can. They are within one day of each other, which actually is what I have learned in the years that I have been working on the academic calendars, is the length of the semester
that I have been working on, on the academic calendars, is the length of the semesters all depends on the day that Christmas falls, and therefore, the, the day that winter break starts. And by being able to start winter break closer to the actual December 25th holiday, we have been able to balance those semesters. Spring semester is always just a little bit longer, but in conversation with our BVEA members, they generally feel like that's okay, since second semester, there is more time in the school day dedicated to student assessment. I'm feeling like that balances out.
Thanks. And then Speaker tonight mentioned the lack of addressing Indigenous Peoples' Day within our calendar. I was wondering if that's something your group has considered or might reconsider with our guiding principles and our requirements?
Well, we definitely could. At any point, we can discuss the addition of, of a holiday, which therefore would imply either replacing that with, with a current holiday, or extending the teacher contract in the school year by one day. So that would be, be a choice that we would make if we, if we went in that direction.
And then last but not least, when was the last time the academic calendar requirements were determined, or how are they determined? And did they take into consideration our shift to an equal school day when we have late starts on multiple Wednesdays or every Wednesday through the school year, roughly 17 hours of work time? I only say that because as a parent, Monday, having Mondays off and having a Wednesday late start makes for a tough beginning, a tough week, like getting going, and I was just wondering how all of that fits together with our new equal school day.
So that actually is a great question, and that was a question that we, as a group, really wrestled with in the previous calendar development cycle. And interestingly enough, we had originally placed our couple of Monday PD days on a Wednesday, thinking that that might be more advantageous for families, to your point, that a Monday and a Wednesday that might be different in one week could be a challenge for families. However, what we heard from our families, principally those from our capital group and others who have jobs in the restaurant industry, said, please, please, if you're going to have days off, please put them back on Mondays, because it's easier for us, because many of our workplaces are closed on Mondays. And so based on that input, we then put those, those professional development days back on Mondays.
Robin, could you just explain again? I ask this every year, but we have new elementary parents that don't understand the importance of ending the semester prior to winter break. So could you maybe just explain that a little bit?
I'm happy to. Thank you for asking that, because there was a time in BVSD when first semester ended after winter break. And because of that, there was a time when there were some very tearful students and families who came and spoke at the Board, saying that there were reasons that, that were very important to high school students, that first semester end prior to winter break. And that was because otherwise, they would spend winter break doing homework, studying for finals, and not feeling like they had time off. In addition, we heard from high school seniors saying, please, please, end first semester before winter break, so that then we are able to access our first semester transcripts in preparation for application for post-secondary opportunities, including college.
I know that last spring, when we voted to switch spring break, I hadn't paid attention to when it originally had been. Was it not originally the last full week of March?
Correct. Last, it was the third week of March, which was the same in alignment with St. Brane. However, CU Boulder's spring break was the last week of March, and so then the spring break was switched to match with CU Boulder.
Well, correctly, if I'm wrong, I thought historically, we had always done it the last full week of March. Is that not true?
Okay. I guess it was true when my kids were in school. They've been out for quite a while. Okay. The only other thing I wanted to talk about, Nicole mentioned it, was Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I would like to propose that even though right now, we're not going to make it a day off, that we at least put it in the calendar as an acknowledgement that we acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day. It could be an opportunity, especially in elementary, for, you know, teachers to do some kind of, you know, special learning about the Indigenous people of our area. Oh, there was one other thing. If we switch a PD to President's Day, do the teachers get that holiday replaced somewhere?
It, it is attached so that it is a two-day pairing, if you will. One day is President's Day, and one day is a professional development.
Okay. So they're still off on President's Day?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Lisa?
Well, Robin, thank you. You know, if you gave me free rein as a parent to redesign this calendar, I would be delighted to make dozens of changes to make this work perfectly for my family. And I know that lots of other families feel that way, and I want to acknowledge that it's frustrating that there are so many different needs we have as parents and as families that we're trying to sort out through these calendars. Having said that, as a Board member, the number of things that you all balance to make this calendar come together every year, it's really remarkable that we're, we're able to come together with a calendar at all. And I think putting together all these different priorities, acknowledging the needs of our high school students, our elementary school students, our neighboring districts, our BVA contract, our holidays, et cetera, it's, it's remarkable that we get this done, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Board members? I'll just echo Lisa's thank you, Robin, because what you're balancing is a lot. Having a daughter who, they start late, they start after Labor Day, so the semester carries into January, it's not just the students, but it's teachers and all of the stress that carries across Christmas break. So I, I think that's a, a smart principle for us to continue to try to, to guide our development of the calendar, because after that, it's a long stretch, and they really do need a break before they start the long stretch into the, the winter month. So thank you for that. And so I think the next step is we bring this back for action at the next Board meeting. All right. Thank you. Next we have, I think we have Dr. Messier, and we have the proposed land acknowledgement. And we have a mic change.
Good evening, President Gebhardt, members of the Board, Dr. Anderson. It is such a great honor this evening to present the words for this land acknowledgement that was developed by our land acknowledgement task force. So just to refresh your memory, in April 26th of this year, you as a Board revised your policy BEDB agenda to include a land acknowledgement statement. So we brought together a task force starting in May of 2022. We, it took a while to recruit some folks. We wanted to make sure that we had a really strong representation of Indigenous voices on that task force. We felt that was really important. And then spent the months of June through August collaboratively drafting the statement that we are bringing to you this evening. We did have some really important guiding principles that were at the forefront of our work. The most important of those was to center the voices of Indigenous people in the development of the statement itself. We also felt like it was important to develop a statement with the intent to really honor Indigenous peoples and to inspire action to support Indigenous communities, that a statement shouldn't just be the end of our work and our thoughts towards really thinking about how to remedy the injustices that Indigenous people have suffered, but that it's, it's an opportunity to inspire further action. We wanted to speak truthfully about past atrocities and current injustices. We wanted to acknowledge and honor the experience, the wisdom, the resilience of Indigenous peoples, and commit to standing with them to confront current injustices. And finally, to incorporate the importance of the land itself to the Indigenous community and the responsibility to care for and appreciate the land on which BVSD resides. So our task force was composed of the following folks. We had some really great community members who volunteered their time to work with us on this. Ava Hamilton, Garan Estes, Bonnie Sundance, Teresa Halsey, Dr. Vivian Delgado, and Ime Salazar. And then BV, from the BVSD side, myself, Yvette Solis, and Dr. Amy Nelson. So one of the things I want to point out is that the majority of the folks on this committee were actually, are actually identified as Indigenous, and composed 66% of the committee members that were part of drafting this statement. So our process was that we had at our first meeting a review of some examples of land acknowledgement statements from a variety of different institutions like CU Boulder and other municipalities, institutions of higher learning, school districts, et cetera. And the group had some conversation about that, highlighted things from those statements they, that really resonated with them, highlighted things that didn't resonate with them, that they wanted to make sure we didn't put in our statement. And then from that, Dr. Nelson and Yvette Solis and I drafted a first draft based on those recommendations, brought that back to the task force. They did a lot of really intense revision to that initial draft. And then we gave our task force members time to review that independently, make some additional recommendations before we settled on the final language that we're bringing to you tonight, which I'm really proud to say, I feel, represents the consensus view of the committee of what they wanted to say, and that it's worded as much as possible in the words of the people that were a part of the committee. And so, that statement is, if, if you would indulge me, I'd love to be the first person to get to read it. Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegally taken territory of the Ute, Puebloan, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land, who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the Indigenous inhabitants from their homeland, supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many Indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of the many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students, so that we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of Indigenous peoples and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of Indigenous people, and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thanks so much, Dr. Messier. So Board members, this is on study. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring it back for action. Any questions, comments? Lisa?
Thank you so much. I just want to say that this is incredibly beautiful and incredibly strong, and I hope that we can live up to it.
I absolutely love the sentiment of all of this, and I understand we are not going to change the wording. However, as an educational institution, I would prefer that the first sentence be more readable than it is, because this is a forward-facing document that people are going to read, and it's a little bit confusing. But I understand we're not changing it. I, and no disrespect to anybody who came up with this.
Yeah, I think as much as the words, Kitty, it's important to honor the process, and so I think that we need to make sure that we've honored both, because so much effort when we started this process, we made sure that it wasn't just us trying to come up with words, and that we had a process that I think we all agreed to. So thank you, Dr. Messier. Thank you, everyone in the audience who's still here, for helping put this together. Richard's raising his hand.
Thank you. I also want to thank the committee for working this wonderful statement and language to put together here. Now, and I'm not sure when we're going to have this discussion or not, but I was understanding that the land acknowledgement would be read at every school board meeting.
I don't think we've had that discussion yet, Richard. So I think when we bring it up for action, we can figure out what the appropriate placement is, like on our website, you know, those kinds of things. So I thought we would talk about those when we bring it up for action.
Also, when we do bring it up for action and it's approved, the land acknowledgement would probably be read at the following board. I, I'm not sure whether we ought to have this discussion now or not, but I'm just curious to see what the process will be, after study item, action, and then... Do I make sense in terms of that? Because I have a, a couple of suggestions. If I may?
Sure.
When we actually implement, we, we inaugurate, let's say, the land acknowledgement. I'd like to, I'd like for us to make it a big celebration of the land acknowledgement, not, not just reading the land acknowledgement. We do have some elders in our community that are excellent drummers, and it would be great to have their presence here and really make this thing something big for the Indigenous community and for our, my, for myself and for everybody else.
Any other suggestions? I think it'd be helpful to get them all on the table so we can figure it out. So the idea of a drummer, drummers, sounds pretty exciting to me. Lisa, and then Stacy.
I don't have any suggestions, but I'm wondering if the committee that put this together offered any ideas about when and how and in what places they were hoping it would be used.
Yeah, so I think that the, the committee was hoping that this would be shared at the beginning of, of Board meetings, and that, that was the, the intent that we drew from the, the policy change that you made to your agenda. Of course, that's at the discretion of the Board. But I, I think that the, the committee invested a lot of time in this statement, and I, I think that they would very much appreciate any context in which it's able to be shared on behalf of BVSD.
Thank you so much. I really hope that we can honor that intent, and I also really appreciate Richard's suggestions. I think that sounds fantastic for a launch.
Stacy?
I recall a conversation, so I thought I would just offer what I remember from our conversation. We had talked about reading something before every meeting. We wanted to make sure that it wasn't too long, whatever. So there, we actually, when we talked about it, we talked that there could be different, two different products. One that goes on our website that's longer, and one that's shorter that we actually read. I don't know if this is both of those things. We can discuss that, but that was our conversation.
That was my memory as well. That's why I thought when we bring it back up, we can, I worry about playing with the language here, but I think we just need to have a conversation that makes sure we honor the intent and all the hard work that went into it, so. And Richard, how do we follow up? Can we put that on you to follow up with what the, the inauguration after? I think once we take it for action, then, I think then after that, we could figure out how we do it, but I think we first need to adopt it.
It would be a pleasure. There, there are some people in the audience right now that know the drummers better than I do, and, and they can make the invitation once we decide, once we bring it to final action.
I just want to make sure we have a plan, so.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm putting that in your lap once we action.
You bet. You got it. And I'm thinking in terms of the, the reading, as it relates to the land acknowledgement, that first paragraph, I think, is really great.
I was just wondering, the language of this is very beautiful, and I think it might be a benefit to our community to see it written in places as well, outside of our policy, which not everybody gets as excited about as I do. And so I'm wondering if there's somewhere else that could live on our website in a place of prominence, so folks can have easy access to those words and the work of the group.
I'm also wondering if we couldn't have it printed somewhere in the building, somewhere where we could see it. So I, I agree that we can have those conversations once we agree. I think when I go to the State Board, they have their mission on the wall, so maybe we could have something like that, where people could see it and be reminded of it as well.
So just a quick, just to get clarification. So today is study. Next time, we're going to vote. Are we looking for two?
we looking for two products next time? You had, to Stacy's point of the recollection of that conversation, we're just voting on this, correct?
Well, I think we'll have that conversation when we bring it up. I think what I'm hearing is the most we would do is if we shorten it up, is just read the first paragraph at every meeting, but not change any of the language or change anything else. So, that's what we'll figure out at the next board meeting. And then we'll put it on Richard to have our inauguration, which I think is pretty exciting. All right, any other conversations around the land acknowledgement? I just thank you, everyone. This has been a really awesome process, and thank you for putting your time in, as my mother would call it, elbow grease into getting this done. All right, the next item we have on study is Resolution 22-28 in support of ballot measure proposition FF, and my cheat notes say Kathleen, you're up for this.
At the board's last meeting, the board had some lengthy conversation about making sure that all of our students in our community have access to healthy meals and nutrition. As part of that discussion, the board highlighted that there is a proposition on the upcoming ballot, 2022 Colorado State Ballot Proposition FF, Healthy School Meals for All Public School Students. This resolution is an opportunity for the board to take a position on that ballot issue and to make that position publicly known. The resolution features the information that supports the ballot measure, and again, this is presented for the board's consideration to take action on a public statement endorsing that ballot proposal.
Board members, I apologize, I missed the last board meeting. I did listen to it, but are there questions about this? I have a couple of questions, but are there questions before? So, Kathleen, I just had a question. My understanding, and I have to go back and read it, is it's not necessarily a tax increase, but it's taking away tax deductions, which I suppose is the same thing as a tax increase?
I hear someone saying tomato, tomato over there. I think in Colorado, we treat everything like a tax increase, even if it is elimination of a deduction. I could dig into that a little more deeply. I can't answer that off the top of my head.
I just think the words "tax increase" carry a different kind of meaning, doesn't... And you're right, I mean, maybe two people are going to care, but I just want to make sure we have the language right, how we describe it. And then, do you have an understanding of what happens if it doesn't raise the amount of money? Is there some commitment, I doubt it, by the state to backfill or an expectation by school districts? I think that's all TBD, right?
That is, to be determined. That's really one, I think, of the comments that's raised about the ballot measure itself. Will it be able to adequately fund this in the long term? So, that's an open question.
I think we all support the intent behind it, so if we can just fix the language around what it actually does, because I just think a tax increase feels a little more like a sure thing as opposed to a change in a deduction, because that seems a little more fluid, Kitty.
I have the ballot language in front of me, and it starts, "Shall state taxes be increased $100,727,820 annually and going on?" So, it starts just like every other, you know, tax increase measure.
But I'll continue reading on to it, and we'll just make sure we have it right, so... So, all right, we'll look at that. So, we'll move on to the last one, which is Resolution 22-27 LGBTQ Representation in Standards and Curriculum. Again, Kathleen, you're up.
I'm not sure I can adequately summarize this, as well as our members of the public who spoke during public comment today. This resolution is directly responsive to the Colorado State Board of Education's process and the public input that the state board has received that would seek to eliminate the requirements for representation in the early grades, so K through three are the targeted grade levels. As this board will remember, House Bill 191192 was the state legislature's adoption to ensure the inclusion of the history, culture, and social contributions of racial and ethnic minorities, religious minorities, and LGBTQ individuals in the public school curriculum. This resolution does include language that we reviewed just a little while ago in your policy platform, that this board talked about at the last meeting, which is specifically to identify that the representation of individuals across the curriculum doesn't make that topic part of sexual education, and it doesn't make it a controversial topic. So, those are really the central elements of this resolution.
Board members, comments on this resolution? Thank you for bringing it forward, Kathleen. Lisa?
Thank you, Kathleen, for the hard work on this, and I just wanted to thank the incredible advocacy of our community here in Boulder that has continued to push and to discuss and to find ways to advocate around this. I think this looks great.
Anyone else? Nicole?
I agree. I think this resolution looks great. One thing I'm thinking about is as we review our policies around curriculum and materials adoption, how we can take some of the ethos of this resolution and put in, put that into those policies, so to make sure our students and our staff are protected and have some safeguards around, around these issues within our curriculum we have here in BVSD.
Yeah, I foresee as we go forward along that point, Nicole, that making sure that we distinguish between the ability to opt out from sex education and not opt out from curricular materials that address LGBTQ issues is going to be something we're going to have to do some education on in our community, as we've seen in past experiences where we've seen families want to opt out of curricular issues. I think we're going to have to have some hard conversations around that, but I totally agree with you, and I agree with the sentiment in this. Any... Richard, I wish we could figure out some kind of drum roll to roll this out, but I think we need to make sure that our state board representatives know about this, and I think we need to figure out how, maybe with Randy, we can figure out how we have some kind of, at least not, maybe not a press release, but some kind of statement from the board about doing this and what our values are and how we plan to go forward with this. Lisa?
I agree with that, and I was just going to say Marty Moore and Neil Fishman have been advocating so hard for this, maybe we can invite them down too for the push-through.
So, we'll put that on your plate, Rob, to figure out with Randy what we could do when, after we adopt this. And I think we should time it with what, time to be able to respond to when the state board is bringing this up so that we can maybe have some kind of, I don't know, I doubt we'll have an impact, but at least a statement of our position.
My understanding that the state board is meeting in Greeley in October.
But I don't think to vote on this in October.
No, they're not going to vote on it, but I mean, that's another protesting stage.
Another opportunity to protest.
I think it bears repeating what Richard said earlier. We, I want us to be leaders in BVSD regarding this topic. I want us to go and do every single thing we can as a district, but also just as a community to support this.
Anyone else? So, we'll bring this back for... Oh, Kitty?
Yeah, and I also think it's important to recognize that we know we're going to pass this, and we know we're going to include this in our curriculum and our standards, but we need to also act on behalf of the students who don't go to this school district, for the kids in the rest of the state and in areas that perhaps are so conservative that they really don't want to discuss this topic and preventing damage to the kids and the families who are LGBTQ and can hopefully find themselves represented. You shouldn't have to live in a certain part of the state in order to see yourself and your family represented in your curriculum.
All right, I will bring this back for final action at the next board meeting. All right, board members, future agenda requests? Lisa?
Okay, so, if I have this right, this new legislative platform, the initial paragraph addresses, among other things, the question of how would we bring up a ballot issue for endorsement, and it seems that the mechanism we've agreed on here is that we would do that by a board member requesting that the board consider such an action. So, I guess that's what I'm doing in regards to the library. I would love it if on our next agenda, we can consider whether or not we want to endorse that measure as the library is requesting.
And we'll get to test whether that fits the criteria of being an entire BVSD issue and will, and see if it fits with our new language in the resolution, which we may or may not need to tweak when we start to apply it. We'll have to see how it goes.
I agree. It'll be an interesting test case, but I would love it if we could bring it next time and start working through it.
Any other agenda items? Rob? You don't get to add agenda items.
I have no desire to add any agenda items. Just to clarify, though, as we're thinking about what we're, what we're talking about here, is the direction of the board to add this to the agenda for the next meeting?
Define this when you say "add this."
The consideration of the library district. And so, I mean, is that, is that, that's the direction that we're going to add that?
That's what I'm asking, yes. I don't know that we need to have a full resolution written at that point, but I think a conversation around whether we want to write a resolution, which we then have on study and then on action, but also like at some point, it just is the election, so the sooner the better.
Which raises an interesting question, which is how do we put things on the agenda since it's, it's a ballot measure and it's coming up with the election, so we don't really have time to go through prioritization to figure out if we would want to do that. So, if it's the will of the board to bring this up at the next board meeting, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure we have a process for figuring out how we do that.
That's right. Just to clarify, and we're fine to bring that forward, right? We followed a prioritization process, and what I, what I just want to be careful of is, is that, that we have the will of the board to put it on the agenda. We could totally do that, but that sits outside of prioritization process, and so there may be some discussions we need to have, maybe at our next retreat or whatever, when these issues happen, how do we make sure that we stay, keep a level of consistency so all board members?
I agree. That's why I said what I said. Nicole, you said you had a question?
So, I guess I just wanted to clarify about the process of how things come on the agenda, and is, is the opening paragraph of our new legislative platform the way in which that happens for items that we maybe take a res, for things we take a resolution on? Is that, because I wasn't sure we had a process on how we take, determine what we bring for resolution, and I was just trying to get some clarity on that, if this new language in our legislative platform does identify that, because that's not how I read it. So, I was just, wanted some clarity.
And I think it's an important conversation because as the legislature goes forward, we're going to have issues that we're going to need to figure out, and how do we bring those up for board discussion? And there'll probably be a couple other ballot measures that may or may not be brought before us, so Kathleen, I'm looking to you.
I'll take the question I can actually answer, which is, yes, the intent of that paragraph was to try and outline those positions, those issues on which the board might take a position, and to capture the way it's historically been done. For example, at the last board meeting, there was a conversation about free and reduced lunch and meal eligibility and nutrition that connected to the ballot issue, which resulted in a request that I draft a resolution. I think that in my experience with boards, from working at the School Boards Association, it's, it's easy for boards to be asked to take positions on a lot of different issues. I was attempting to sort of outline the scope of those issues that the board might actually address with the language that says, "The board adopts positions on issues that directly impact PK-12 education and the board's work to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities," and then finishes with the school district's mission statement as a way to sort of carve that out. But certainly, this is your document, this is your platform, and can capture whatever language the board believes would best suit its interest.
Just a point of clarification. So, we can put this on, would we put this then within an existing, ongoing topic, which is legislative priorities? Would we want to extend that? I'm just trying to think, is it for action? Is it for study? Is it for information? Trying to just think from just logistically, how we, how we create a consistent path on doing this. I did, that's, that's just the clarification I'm looking for.
Since I wasn't here at the last board meeting, I don't know how the resolution for the meals made it on to the agenda. I was fine with that, but I don't know that we followed a process.
Rob suggested it.
With resolutions, we've, we've had a rhythm with that, right? If there's a conversation at the board, there's a resolution that the board acts on and they approve it or not approve it, right? But what we're talking about is a discussion item to take a position, and so is it, and I'm just trying to think where that would sit within the agenda. I'm just trying to just, you know, set us up for success in the future, right? Because to the extent that we've been really tight on our prioritization process, I just want to make sure that we're being consistent and that we don't set the expectation that maybe doesn't meet the will of the board. So, we can put it on the agenda, we would put it on study as a discussion item for the board in regards to a proposed, I'm just, I'm just working through logistics. I'm happy to work with you, Kathy, on that. I just want to make sure that we just figure out how, what's the best way to do this when, when the board decides this is what it wants to do.
Kathleen?
Well, and I think that the way resolutions have come forward in the past is because it is something that is a topic of discussion amongst the board, and it feels important to make a public statement. I think the ones that have come out of not an organic, natural conversation of the board are typically on ballot issues. I wonder if in election years, we might want to set an agenda item where we review ballot issues so that we can do it comprehensively and not sort of as they're brought forward?
So, like a standing item, so there's a rhythm, right? And there's an expectation that during election, if there's things that the board wants to consider, and there's a knot of heads that we added in that, in that potential section, I think that makes, that makes it clearer that that's something that even, that sits outside of our prioritization process, right, that then would support kind of this resolution? That's what I'm trying to think. I'm just thinking through.
Stacy?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused about this particular request because our families in Broomfield, for example, won't have this on their ballot. So, I'm confused about how that fits in with our district and our discussion about these things. Like, the, the meal one is a state ballot issue. It's on everybody's, so I'm just confused.
Well, I guess I would suggest that it clearly affects a substantial number of families in our district, and that similarly, when BoCo Dems endorsed our ballot measure, that their reach is larger than our district and also does not encompass all of our district, but it fell enough within their purview that they found it appropriate. But I don't think it's a question at this moment of whether or not we all agree that we want to endorse it, but that it has been asked repeatedly by the folks running the ballot measure and that we have all discussed the idea about having a conversation about whether or not to endorse. So, if nobody other than me on the board wants to have that conversation, then I think that's determinative, but if folks are up for having it, I think we just need to knock it out before we get to the election.
I agree. We need to have that conversation.
I'll call on Kitty.
Well, it's also not on Superior, and I don't think it's on Louisville or Lafayette either, but I do think we should talk about it because access to libraries directly impacts our students, and students who don't live within the area that would be the Boulder Library District could still go to those libraries if they're closer to their homes.
I, I'm uncomfortable singling out ballot measures because people request. I like Kathleen's idea that we have a standing ballot measure, agenda item, because I don't think it should depend on whether people have asked, because there may be other ballot measures that we should discuss that people haven't come and asked us about. So, I think having that is, seems like a good workaround, that we just have like in September and October, we have a standing piece on our agenda that we can have the conversation that raises the issues that you raised, Stacy, that I share the concerns on, and we have those conversations. So, by putting it on, we're not assuming that we agree or don't agree, we're putting it on for the conversation. We're putting it on for the conversation. Lisa?
Yeah, I think it would be fantastic to have a meeting where we go over all of the various ballot measures that you might consider endorsing, but I'm curious whether you're proposing that for this year, that we would get that in gear for two weeks from now, or whether that's a proposal that we would be following up in future years, given the timing.
That's a good question. That I think will, how many board meetings do we have between now? We have the 11th is the first one, and we have one more, two more before the election.
Just, and I think Nicole had raised her hand.
Sorry, Nicole.
But just, I just want to create a predictable, a predictable process where not only, what I'm trying to do is, if we're taking a precedent on doing something like this, right? Again, the resolutions we've passed since I've been your superintendent have been, hey, you know, there's been a pretty good knot of heads around those. If there's topics that the board is considering taking a position on, to have a mechanism, and I think it can happen next week, I think you put it on study, and we'll just create a topic that says, you know, topics, you know, topics for consideration for support. We'll come up with the right language, but then, and then you may have to follow that up with a board policy, right, that directs staff on when and how things get added in regards to that, to give us the direction. And when people ask you to support something or not support something, what is the threshold where you consider it, right? Because if you consider something and don't consider something else, and you don't have policy and guidelines to direct that, then the worry would be that potentially you could be asked to discuss something that, you know, and then by weighing in and taking positions, I just want some clear rules to the road, and I think that's just good governance, and it'll give us the direction so when these things happen, that we can, we can give the, we have the process that allows the board to have the discussions that you choose to have.
Lisa? Nicole, did you have a question? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, since you weren't here, it came up because it was an information item that moved to study that moved to action, which is kind of the cadence we follow on many of our items. That's how this FF came to this place. And the point I appreciate there, Rob, is process is really important for the work of this board, and we need to be very consistent throughout. And so identifying that, whatever that looks like, I think would be the best interest for us this year and for years ahead of us, so I would love to get that process cleaned up.
Lisa, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think a process is great. I've been asking us to discuss a process for, I think, six weeks at this point, so I don't care what process we follow or how we do it, but I would just like to know that either this board is opposed to the idea of discussing whether or not to support the library resolution, or that if the board is generally in favor of having that conversation, we can get it done in a timely fashion, given the two board meetings we have. I think there's clearly a way to look at stronger, better, clearer formats for how we do this going forward, but I am feeling a little bit frustrated with the number of times we've discussed this issue, and that we still haven't decided whether or not to have the conversation about it, and so now we're running out of time.
Hence my point. Hence my point, you know, to the extent that there's something clear that everybody knows and understands, and it's not people bringing things up, and then, is it getting on the agenda or not getting on the agenda? Let's have a clear process. I think for next board meeting, board members, if you're okay, we can put an item, we can see how that works, we can talk about this topic as a board, if you'd like, and then we can, you know, not to add more policy work, Kathleen, you look so excited, but I do feel like a proposed policy for your consideration that creates rules to the road, because this may be precedent setting. I don't know that other boards have a policy like this, if CASB has a model policy, so we can, but we can do a little bit of digging.
And Lisa, we haven't been ignoring you. This is why we have this language. It's why we brought it up, and I think it's a really important conversation, because do we weigh in on a tax increase by Superior or a Broomfield issue? I just think that because we cross three counties and as many jurisdictions as we do in municipalities, that we really do need to have a clear process for this.
Well, I wasn't suggesting it had been ignored, just that we've been trying to get this done for a while, and we are running out of time, and my point was only if we're going to do it, we should do it.
So I guess we'll see what the process is. Richard, go ahead.
So I think this discussion just affirms the fact that we need to have a process, but it doesn't take away from the fact that time is running out. This issue has been on the table, and I think that bringing it as a study at the next board meeting would give us sufficient time to act on it at the following board meeting, and then we can see the will of the board at that time. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think the issue of how we take a position has been brought up, but not the specific issue of the library district. I don't think that's been brought up until, in my memory. We've talked about how we're going to look at overall ballot measures and issues that are brought to us, so I agree that we'll bring this up for study, and we'll see where it goes. Any other issues for agenda setting, board members?
Let me understand this. If it comes up for study, what are we going to be studying? The resolution?
So here's what I've heard, and I think I've heard this correctly. We are going to put an item for study, right, for discussion on, we're going to try to come up with a rhythm for, and a process for when the board wants to entertain and have the discussion whether to take a position or not, right? And that's, I think, where you all are at. And so we'll put it on study, gives you another, to have the discussion, to give us direction that we could then give you the resolution at the next board meeting, right? But I think that without a process, you have folks that are bringing things up in agenda setting. Most of the time, right, and this is why, this is why I just paused the board in this conversation, most of the time since I've been here, when things come up in agenda setting, we don't consider them until the end of the semester, right? It's a topic that we add, right? But what's happening now is that we're getting requests for agenda setting items that are timely, that if you waited, then the board couldn't do anything with that, right? So what's the process for that, which is what is why I'm just trying to get clarity, and we can work with our team to try to figure that out for the board. So then you'd have multiple mechanisms to bring things forward for the entire board to discuss in a way where every board member feels like they have access to that process, and it's very clean, and that it gives board clear direction, right? Because what you're discussing right now, this taking the position of the library, it's board business, right? And so I just want to, you know, Superintendent, I want to give you the process to be able to allow you to do that, and I'll be able to access that, and so that's what we're going to be working on.
Stacy?
Is taking a position on something the same as a resolution? Can you do one without the other?
I'm looking to Kathleen.
When the board is talking about taking a position on an issue that will be on the ballot, the resolution is the established mechanism to do that. It gives us the ability, then, to distribute the resolution, to make that publicly known, which is really what resolutions are, in a way that is compliant with state law, and that's the reason that we use resolutions in particular for ballot measures.
All right, I think, thank you for helping us muddle through this, everyone, because I think it's important conversations to make sure that voices are heard, and that important issues are raised, and that we have a process that we all are comfortable with. So, anything else for the good of the order tonight? All right, I will see everyone October 11th, if not before. Meeting adjourned.